You all seem expectant, and so I think I will begin. Welcome to the 2018 Meet the Candidates Night Forum for Abingdon Town Council. I’m Mary Jennings, President of the League of Women Voters of Washington County. The League of Women Voters has been in existence since 2006 in Washington County and operated electoral forums most of that time. The League is a nonpartisan organization that doesn’t endorse any political party or candidate. The League has a website to provide information about the candidates and their positions. Go to Vote 411 for the Town Council candidate answers to five other questions than we will have time for tonight. I’d like to thank the people who’ve made this forum possible. First of all, Virginia Highlands Community College for being a host to us. Kathy Hudson and Charlotte Parsons are our timekeepers tonight in the first row, and they’ll be putting up yellow and red papers every now and then. Jess Nosera of the Bristol Herald Courier and photographer Earl Nykirk is here tonight, and we thank them for coming. Richard Graves of WEHC is recording the forum, and it will be broadcast, hopefully, next Monday, April 23rd at 2:00 p.m. on WEHC. So tell your friends and neighbors that if they didn’t come tonight, there’s another chance. It will also be available on their website for you to listen to. David Radford of Premier Video is videotaping it, and that will be available on YouTube and a link from the League’s Facebook page. And finally, Jen Watson of Young Appalachian Patriots is live streaming this event on their Facebook page. Please remember to silence your cell phones. Okay, anybody have a question that they have not gotten to the desk in the back? Thank you all for coming tonight, and I’d like to welcome our moderator, Dr. Rachel Fokes. Hada. She is the -- yeah, do welcome. Rachel is the retired Director of the Southwest Virginia Higher Education Center, and I am very grateful for her doing this tonight. Thank you.
Well, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event and to all of you who put on your snow boots to come out tonight. It was really great of you to do that. This is the 2008 Meet the Candidate Forum for the Abingdon Town Council. Tonight, we’re very fortunate to hear from eight candidates. I have lived in this town for almost 50 years, and I remember many elections where we had no choices. So we should give all of these candidates right now a round of applause for doing this. So you will have the opportunity for each of them to talk first about -- a little bit about themselves, but while they’re doing that, take a moment to hold the bio in front of you. I think each of you received a copy of their bios when you walked in the door. We did that tonight. Thanks to Eric, Reese suggested that we trim this program down so you had more opportunity to ask questions than to hear from us. So thank you for making that suggestion, and if you read those bios, that will be a way for us just to streamline the event tonight and have more time for questions and answers. We are going to have a few ground rules that I’d like all of you to pay close attention to. You’ve done this before, so you probably already understand what those are like, what the ground rules are like. First of all, you’ve already been instructed to silence your cell phones, so thank you for doing that. I really appreciate that. The second thing is you’ve received a card to put your questions and submit those questions. While you are listening to the candidates describe -- give an opening statement about themselves and then a question that I will ask them from the League of Women Voters, there will be a panel of the League compiling the questions that you have submitted. They will be looking for repetitious questions so that they can combine them into one. They will also look to expand into a broad range of topics so that we cover the consensus of what most of you are looking to hear tonight. And then they’ll also address some of our significant concerns. So those questions will be pulled together, and hopefully, we’ll have time for five to six, seven, hopefully, questions before time to conclude near 9:00 tonight. So I hope those criteria are fine for you with the way that’s going to go. But here are some of the ground rules that we’d like for you to follow. First of all, no applause, please, after each person makes their -- answers their question. No applause, no comments on the floor, no signs, posters, or anything that expresses your opinion one way or the other about any of the candidates. Otherwise, if you can’t follow those rules, as an old-school teacher, I’ll have to send you to timeout. So let’s all cooperate tonight. The candidates will have two minutes each to answer their questions, to answer your questions. They will also have one minute at the end of the question-and-answer series for a final -- for their final comments. We’ve already instructed them how the timing will go. You’ve already been introduced to Charlotte and Kathy. They are going to hold up cards, a yellow card, at 30 seconds before they have to conclude their remarks. Kathy will have -- or Charlotte will have a red card when there’s -- when there are 10 seconds left, and then finally, we won’t see this, but if they don’t follow that rule, one of them will stand up and shake the red card. Time to stop. All of our questions and answers will be directed down the line. Each candidate will just take the microphone and speak into the microphone so that you can hear. If for some reason you’re having difficulty hearing, just raise your hand in the audience, and we’ll make sure that we adjust that as necessary. So with that having been decided, I hope everybody’s in agreement with that. One thing you should know is that at the end of the forum tonight, the candidates have agreed to remain for just a little while for you to ask personal questions that were not covered. So if there is -- if we didn’t address something that’s a burning desire to have information about, stay around afterwards, and they will be glad to talk with you at that time. So are you ready? Everybody’s ready to start? Okay. Let’s ask James Scavo Anderson if he would begin by telling us a little bit about himself, and as he finishes, he’ll just pass the mic on down the table, and we’ll hear from Al Bradley, et cetera. Okay? Thank you.
Good evening. I am the wicked one, James Richard Scavo Anderson. Just like the bio said, I was born and raised here in Abingdon, educated here, graduated from Abingdon High School. I worked for the United States Department of Agriculture, Forest Service Division, where I’m an academic teacher for the Job Corps, Jacobus Creek Job Corps. I have worked with tremendously amount of youth activities such as sports, helped a little bit with Boy Scouts, and I’ve seen our youth come and go. My plan is to create and have things which the youth would want to stay around a little bit longer. You know, we don’t have enough activities to attract them. And at one time in my life, I was one of the ones that said, “I can’t wait till I’m 18 so I can get away from here.” But when you get out there and you know what you know, you find yourself coming back to Abingdon. And I hope to, as you come -- as our youth come back to Abingdon, to have them to want to stay awhile and want them to be able to raise their children here. What I plan is to be -- to have an open-door policy for the citizens, and I will do my best to answer your questions or research it to give you a sufficient answer. Thank you.
Hello, I’m Al Bradley. My past experience in local government includes 25 years as Abingdon’s planning director, interim Washington County Administrator, and prior to that, I served in the U.S. Air Force. I’m still convinced that the deep division over the Meadows Project can be healed. The New Town Council must ensure that the commercial development and the recreational tract comply with Abingdon’s ordinances and that revenues from the project will be sufficient to repay the bonds without resorting to excessive tax increases. Besides the Meadows, the New Town Council will be faced with many challenges. Abingdon’s reserve for contingencies fund has been reduced to the point that we may be facing financial difficulties, and that must be corrected. We have too many vacant storefronts in our town, and tourism is struggling. Our town management is in disarray. The town should concentrate on tourist-related businesses and activities and continue to protect and beautify its historic district. I’d like to see improved cooperation with Washington County and development of industrial potential within the town itself. Wouldn’t it be great to give the fringe areas of Abingdon a sense of community with the rest of the town and to reinvigorate some older neighborhoods? We will have to meet with the residents to find out how best to do that, and there are young people who need increased recreational activities and facilities. I have most recently served on the Sinking Springs Cemetery Committee and is chairman of the Abingdon Redevelopment and Housing Authority. In closing, I love this town, and I want to see it prosper. I believe we can do more within the town’s budgetary limits. As one of the primary movers of the Virginia Creeper Trail from its inception, a founder of the town’s farmers market, and a force behind the town’s fiber optic backbone and Wi-Fi system, I think I have the ability to place the town of Abingdon back on the rails where it belongs. I want to do more good things for Abingdon.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for being here tonight, and thank you to League of Women Voters for hosting us. One quick update to my bio. I’m now up to having met with over 70 different residents and small-business owners since deciding to run. When I first arrived here over 10 years ago, I chose to settle and build my life here because there are so many things that make Abingdon special and unique. Mainly, it’s the people and the sense of community that drew me here. I have great faith in our strength as a community, and I believe we can learn from past mistakes and continue to move forward. As a friend phrased it the other day, “When it’s high tide, all the boats rise.” So how? So we need to reestablish a sense of trust and transparency between our town government and its citizens. I’m concerned with the current state of our communication channels. It’s 2018; there’s no reason why the town of Abingdon can’t communicate in wider and more diverse ways. We also need a wider range of ways for folks to give citizen input and feedback. If someone cannot make it to a monthly town council meeting, how else can they make their voice heard? I plan to hold monthly office hours so that people can come meet with me one-on-one, even if they’re the most introverted person who would never get up in front of a meeting. We also need a straight-talk translation to go along with our government announcements, as well as a clearly stated public timeline. To me, transparency is about proactive communication, not just waiting for someone to ask a question, but providing information and details upfront and accessible in many different ways. Abingdon’s small-town charm and economic growth don’t need to be mutually exclusive. There are ways to revitalize our town without reinventing the wheel or undercutting what’s already working for us. I’m happy to represent some unique needs and perspectives of the younger generations and families in our town. Lastly, please, please, reach out to me with any questions, concerns, or comments. I would really want to hear from all of you. I’m a team player; I’m an open book; I’m trustworthy, and I hope to have the chance to truly represent you on Abingdon’s Town Council.
Thank you. My name is Jim Moore, and I appreciate this opportunity to earn your trust and earn your support as a candidate for Town Council. I’m proud to be from Abingdon. I grew up on the farm just outside of town. We now have before us a unique opportunity to provide Abingdon with an open, all-inclusive government, restoring the town culture that is above and beyond reproach. Do not forget, we live in the Commonwealth, where governance derives from the common consent of all citizens for the good of all citizens. We have been blessed with the inheritance of Abingdon’s rich history, cultural heritage, beauty and ambiance. Many in the Virginia Department of Historic Resources feel that Abingdon has more history than any other location other than the Jamestown-Wilsonburg-Yorktown corridor. These assets are the envy of every town in Virginia. It is our moral duty as council members, businesspersons, merchants, and citizens to protect, preserve, and promote these assets, building upon them progressively, all of us working together as responsible stewards of Abingdon’s future. We must recognize that tourism is our primary industry. Tourists today are seeking unique cultural experiences and diverse outdoor activities, all of which we have in abundance. As a Town Council member, I will advocate for robust, innovative, and forward-thinking initiatives for sustainable tourism and a sustainable economy for Abingdon’s future. Thank you.
Good evening. I’m Ed Morgan, and I want to thank the Washington County League of Women Voters for sponsoring tonight’s Candidate Forum and for their ongoing efforts to inform the voters and engage citizens in the electoral process. I’m grateful to have the opportunity to participate in tonight’s forum. I served on the Abingdon-Virginia Town Council for 16 years, and I was mayor of Abingdon for six of those years. I’m very proud of what I accomplished working with my fellow council members during that period. I feel that I helped to make Abingdon a better place to live, and I’m grateful that I was given the opportunity to serve our town. While on council, I supported the development of the Meadows Business and Sports Complex because I felt that it would provide jobs, recreational opportunities for our youth, and new tax revenues for our town, which could help to prevent raising property taxes in the foreseeable future. Some voters disagreed with my actions. In fact, some said I wasn’t listening to the voters, and I was given an extended sabbatical from town government as a result. The Abingdon Town Council has experienced a series of controversies over the past two years and has been in what I might tactfully describe as a state of disarray. I believe that our town is in desperate need of experienced, competent leadership, and a good measure of common sense, and I think that I am the most qualified person running for council to address that need, and I would appreciate the opportunity to once again serve the citizens of Abingdon. Thank you.
Good evening. I’m Christina Morris. Been here in Abingdon for 30 years. I would like to also thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum tonight and for all of y’all coming out in this horrible weather to be with us. I hope to earn your vote for Town Council tonight. My campaign began on January 1st with three primary objectives. First and foremost, to ensure the business of the town is held at the highest possible standards of Virginia’s Freedom of Information Act. To regain the confidence of the public, their servants must be open and transparent. Second, development of small businesses in town must become a priority. Attention must be paid to the development and growth of small-business community throughout the entire town. And third, citizens should expect and receive respectful and timely responses from their elected officials and from-town employees. I feel my public service has prepared me for the potential challenges which lie ahead for the Town Council. Assisting constituents in Congressman Boucher’s office, providing employment services to low-income seniors, coordinating professional volunteers in a 13-county region, and earning a master’s degree in community and organizational leadership is my foundation for seeking this office. Recently, when asked to describe some of the skills necessary to be an effective volunteer coordinator, I realized some of the same skills are necessary to be an effective member of the Town Council. Diplomacy, problem-solving, conflict resolution, advocacy, being a visionary, a planner, and a teacher are all the skills necessary to serve and move Abingdon forward, and I feel I bring all of this and more to the office. Serving the public is the path I’ve chosen for my life both professionally and personally, and I look forward to serving as your Town Council member.
Hi. Hi. My name is Donna Quetch, and I’d also like to thank the community and the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this forum. I’m also thankful for other civic organizations across our community who care about Abingdon. Oh, I’m sorry. I have not run for Town Council or any other elected office before. My decision to run was not about me, and if elected, my service will be to the community, to all the residents of Abingdon. It’s just seemed like the right time, and with some encouragement from others, I offer my experience, my passion, and my best to the Office of Town Council. I am confident that my experience and commitment to a seat on Town Council will enable me to grasp the issues before me. As my biography states, I have worked all my adult life at Abingdon Cleaners. First as a young county clerk, I later became a key person and corporate officer for the former Aldous. In 2000, my husband and I bought the business and have operated it successfully since then. From the beginning, I understood who I worked for. That was the customer first. I knew that if I wanted a raise in pay, or a new piece of equipment, or better pay for my employees, that I needed to rely on my focus on the customers to get these things done. We firmly believe in a high level of service and in providing quality work and value to our customers. If we focus on that, everything else follows. So I guess you could say that I would be a business-like candidate for Town Council. Remember, though, that I would be thinking always about who I worked for. That is the citizens of Abingdon. So if it looks like I’m pro-business, know that I’m only pro-business when it’s good for the citizens of Abingdon. It has been said, and I’m going to use the same phrase, that a rising tide lifts all boats. Hard work and knowing who I worked for has gotten me where I am today. This is how I will approach my seat on Town Council if the voters choose to elect me.
First of all, I’d like to thank the League of Women Voters for so graciously hosting this forum, but most of all, I’d like to thank you, the audience, for coming out tonight in the snow. I see many friends and family and supporters in the crowd, and by the end of tonight, I hope to garner even more support. It is for all of you that I have dedicated myself to this run for Town Council. For those of you who don’t know me, I’m Derek Webb, and I’m a community pharmacist here in Abingdon, and I’m honored and humbled to be running for council in my hometown. I’ve been married to my lovely wife Rebecca for almost 15 years, and we’ve been blessed with a six-year-old daughter who attends Watauga Elementary. I’m running for council because I believe I can help Abingdon, and I’m certain that I should try. I’ve been saddened to witness our town so divided and segregated over the past couple of years. It’s apparent to me that we need to unite, heal, and move forward beyond all our differences. I’m confident through teamwork, diligence, open communication, and transparency, we can renew the sense of camaraderie that many feel we have been missing for some time. If elected, my goals include job growth, historic preservation, emphasizing tourism, and youth-based activities. I truly believe we need to embrace the much-needed sports complex at the Meadows and make sure that we make that venue as great as possible. My daughter is counting on it, and our youth deserve it. My overall goals for Town Council parallel that of the Boy Scouts’ golden rule. I want to leave Abingdon better than I found it. In closing, we have many wonderful people in our community, and if we unite and work together as a team, I’m certain we can make Abingdon as great as possible. So with your support and your vote, I’d like to roll up my sleeves and get busy, making Abingdon greater and more united than ever before.
Thank you to all of these candidates who’ve taken time to tell us a little bit about themselves and what their goals and objectives are if elected to the Town Council. We’re going to begin the questioning now, and in order not to put Mr. Anderson on the spot for every single question, we’re going to rotate the responses. So beginning with this question, Mr. Bradley will be our first respondent, and then we’ll go on down the list, and Mr. Anderson will have the chance to breathe a little deeper and speak last. So does that suit you well? I thought that would -- okay. So ladies and gentlemen, your first question is as follows. What do you see as a significant challenge facing Abingdon, and what do you propose to do about this? Be as specific as you can in two minutes. Mr. Bradley?
I think to start off, I’m more concerned about the divisions I find in the town. We have divisions of older folks versus younger folks, which we’ve always had, plus the newcomers versus the older residents, and on and on, and I think there’s room for a lot of improvement in the town’s management of these things. I think we could open up the Town Council meetings to listen and hear all constituents and to act on and listen to their complaints and suggestions, and I hope we can bridge the gaps and all come together.
I don’t know about the rest of you, but there’s a lot of empty storefronts along our main street and in Abingdon, and that doesn’t look good for all of us as a whole, and even if a thriving business is right next door to an empty, abandoned-looking building, that doesn’t serve us either. So my goal and one of the biggest challenges I think we face is revitalizing Abingdon in a sustainable way that still retains its unique charm and local identity. I do absolutely think it’s possible. We have to focus on it, and the flip side of some of that challenge is not only do we need to find ways to do that, currently, the narrative for so long has been, “It’s a nightmare to start a small business in Abingdon.” I’ve been hearing that for 10 years. I’ve never asked why before running for Town Council, and I’ve been out asking why and how we might be able to change that. I do have a couple of ideas. I’ve also spoken to some people. There’s a lot that’s already changed in our town. For example, two of our town employees have recently come up with, just at the start of this year, a business -- a small-business checklist where someone can come in and see what they need to do. That’s specific to Abingdon, who they need to see, what paperwork is involved. We never had that before. That blew my mind. It’s only four months old. That’s common sense to me. We need more things like that to make it easier for people who want to bring their business into this town. We can continue to build further. I also think we need to reassess some of our ordinances to figure out what is working for us and what may be hindering some people. Sometimes you have to wonder, are we doing things because it’s the way we’ve always done them, or are we doing them because they are actually serving and supporting our residents and our business owners? I’m not saying that all of them need to be overhauled and overthrown, but we got to ask the question. And I think one place that we could start is to invite citizen input to find out the ones that perhaps made starting a business in Abingdon a nightmare within the last five years. Let’s start there and see what we can do to help that. So overall, revitalize and change the narrative.
There are numerous challenges facing Abingdon, short-term, long-term, but we have to realize that the newly-elected Town Council come July is going to face one significant challenge. We have to be able to act immediately in July as the leaders of this town. An immediate situation to be resolved is the current EEOC conflict between town management and Town Council. We cannot run an orderly town with that hanging over the New Town Council. We must restore a sense of trust and communication with the citizens. I would suggest immediately moving the town manager’s office from the third floor down to the first floor, where the manager can see and relate and communicate with the citizens. I would restore the open work sessions so that the citizens can see what the Town Council is up to, be present, ask questions, participate, be listened to, be respected. We also need an immediate project where the citizens can feel like they have some reason to be involved, make progress, and see immediate improvement. So I’m asking everyone to join me once the snow stops flying and it warms up, to have our first community day. Bring your bucket of paint and a paintbrush. Meet me at the Fields Pen House on this -- Meet me at the Fields Pen House and let's paint the Picket Fence. Clean up the yard and make that focal point of town more beautiful before the summer tourist season gets here.
There are some things about Dr. Moore's statement that I absolutely agree with, which is perhaps unusual these days. But I would also note that I think one of the things that needs to happen with our town is that, in terms of moving us forward, we need to begin with the council ourself, or the council itself. The council has not been able to function very well over the last two years. There's not been any kind of a well-defined, common vision for that council. Things have not gone well, and I think there is a need to build consensus and a common vision among the council members. We're not going to be able to move forward as a town until we have that shared vision of where it is that we're going. That's going to involve discussion with the public, involvement in the planning process, but also the council working amongst themselves, building trust, building relationships, and again, coming to a shared vision of where our town is going so that we can move forward. And when we're having conflict, there's no way that we can move forward, and it's time that we build these relationships, we build trust, first of all, among ourselves as council members, and secondly, with the public, so that we can have a shared vision and our town can be a better place than it is today. Thank you.
About three weeks ago, I started at Capo's Music and drove all the way down to the west end of Abingdon's town limit. I took a picture of every storefront that was empty or that had a "For Lease" sign in it. And then I came back and I did the same thing just down Valley Street, just down those two streets. There were thirty-five empty storefronts and businesses and places that had "For Lease" signs in them. To me, I think that's our biggest challenge flat-out right there. We've got, if someone comes into town and sees empty storefront after empty storefront, what is their opinion of this town? How do they feel about this town? How do they feel about the strength of this business community in the town of Abingdon? One of the things that I would like to see is, I'd like to see us having a full-time planner, economic development director, that's working on this process 24/7. I mean, that's two streets in Abingdon with that many empty storefronts. To me, that was just incredible. I just was absolutely blown away by that. So how many other places did I not see? How many other locations? Now, I was pleased to see two new businesses that put out new signs this past week, but at the same time, I know of two businesses that closed. So I think our biggest challenge for the town overall is that we have got to put some attention and some focus into the development of small businesses. It's not all on the interstate. It's got to be small businesses, and not just in the historical area, but throughout the entire town, from one end of Abingdon to the other. That needs to be where our focus is.
Well, I'd share a story. That the day after the petition was signed for me to run, and I was in, a nice, beautiful young lady came to my counter and said, "Which side are you on?" And I thought, "Which side am I on? You've got to be kidding. This is Abingdon? Which side am I on?" So I look at it, the first thing we have to do is, we have to have healing in this town. We are divided. And, you know, and we have to, you know, learn to forgive each other and pray for each other and pray for our town. I think that's where it's got to start.
I've heard a lot of great ideas already, and I agree with many of the things that have been said, but I'm actually going to take a little bit different avenue. I honestly think that the biggest challenge we have facing us in the long term is the lack of young families moving into and staying in Abingdon. If you look at the statistics on southwest Virginia, the highest-ranking group of individuals that don't move into or retain in Abingdon and surrounding areas are twenty-five to forty-five-year-olds. And that's a huge percentage of your working base and your tax base. And I think, you know, like I said, lots of these, I'm not disagreeing, lots of these ideas are great. We need small businesses. They're the backbone of our community, and we've got to find a way to attract those businesses. But if you don't have the population statistics to support those businesses, then those businesses are never going to be able to stay open. This is coming from a person who is a small business owner in town. I have experience with how difficult it is to open and retain customers and be able to make enough money to survive in the business world nowadays. But like I said before, I think we've got to find a way to attract young families to Abingdon and retain them in Abingdon. I think there's a couple of ways to do that. One is this sports complex. I know that sounds crazy, but I was talking to a friend of mine the other day that owns a business in town, and he told me that every time he recruits somebody to work for him, that that's one of the key components that's missing in Abingdon. And many employees have actually moved to Kingsport over Abingdon because of the sports facilities. Having said that, I think we also have to stimulate some job growth. You know, we've got to have something in the IT software sector to move into Abingdon to retain or to attract young prospective candidates to move into the area. There's a lot of different ways you can approach it, but like I said, I think we've got to find a way to attract and retain young folks.
I think the main thing that Abingdon is facing is unification, division. We have too many divisions in our community, in our town. We need to set a common goal, which we should be making Abingdon the best, making Abingdon the pride of living. And the only way we're going to do that is search our hearts and find the real truth. Quit lying to each other. Be for real. The only way we can accomplish anything is for the citizens to realize that I can come and I can speak my opinion. I can speak my voice. I don't have to go through nobody. I can talk to the candidate. I can talk to the council. I can talk to the mayor. I can talk to whoever I need to talk to. But people, we've got to be real. We've gone too far, and we've created turmoil within our town. I am from Abingdon. I've been from Abingdon, and I'm going to stay in Abingdon. And I, I'm not going through the same thing that I went through yesterday. I'm not going to have my kids going through the same thing I went through. So let's make Abingdon great. Thank you.
Thank you for those candid responses to the first question. Are you ready now for number two, question number two? This time, we will ask Mr. Bradley if he will start the answers to that, to this question. These are questions from our audience. I did. Thank you very much. What can town leaders do to revitalize our downtown and help local businesses prosper? Also, how can the council encourage young people to remain, to come and to remain in Abingdon? Ms. Ingram?
Would you read the first part again?
Yes, I will. What can town leaders do to revitalize our downtown and help local businesses prosper? Also, how can the council encourage young people to move here or to retain those who are here?
All right. It's my turn. I'll start with helping out some of the small businesses, building on some of the answers to my last question. I've talked to a bunch of small business owners about ways that the town has helped them, and then ways that the town has kind of hindered or made them jump through some hoops. I do have some ideas. I think that we can incentivize, A, and it'll actually play into bringing some young people here or keeping some young people here, building on the strengths we already have. Let's incentivize some of our small businesses with their business licenses to stay open on a Sunday, for example. One of the things we have working for us is the Creeper Trail. So if that's the case, why don't we have anything open on a Sunday when a family of five has worked up an appetite out on the Creeper Trail, comes back into town, and doesn't know where to go to eat or do anything? Another thing we can do to build on something that's already working for us, Barter Theater releases tons, hundreds hopefully, of people out into the town at 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, many of whom don't want to get in their car and drive home yet, and there's not really anything open. There's nothing for them to do, no place for them to go. Talking to the small business owners, they say, "Ah." But sometimes people show up, sometimes they don't, and we end up losing money, because the narrative takes a long time to catch on for people to know that something is even open on a Sunday or open late night. I think one thing we can do as a town, tying into communication, is having a one-stop-shop where you have information, community announcements, government announcements, openings of businesses, extended business hours, a place where people can go to learn that information, and then incentivizing to help the small businesses be able to stay open by giving them a tax abatement for the first two years, for example, that kind of a thing. That will also help young people to have a little bit of a nightlife and weekend life and give them something to do.
Revitalizing downtown is critical. We have empty storefronts, businesses leaving. We need to streamline the new business application process. Look at our codes, many of which are conflicting, making it difficult for new businesses to start. We need to encourage the development of a merchants association. This is one thing I've heard repetitively as I walk Main Street. These individuals have dedicated their business lives to this Abingdon, bringing ambiance and unique shops and businesses, not just for us but for tourists. We need to encourage them, listen to them. They have bright ideas. We need to have a focus on what we want downtown to be. New tourist studies show that in thriving downtown areas, up to seventy percent of the business occurs after 6:00 PM. We need to relook at how our businesses operate. Many close on Sundays when tourists are in town. We need to make it more business-friendly for weekend tourists. Retaining young people with good-paying jobs is going to require working with the county. The industrial parks are in Washington County. Abingdon can be the shining star, the gem of beauty, ambiance, culture that draws to the area, but we have to work with the county and education, to educate workers to draw businesses here, to employ these young families. They have to have a job that's going to be in the industrial parks of the county.
A few minutes ago, Mr. Webb commented about, I think, a key point of the survival and prosperity of small business, and that is, you have to have customers. The population of southwestern Virginia as a whole has declined dramatically over the past decade or so with the collapse of the coal industry. The population of Abingdon has essentially been stable over the last few years. Washington County has experienced a slight bit of growth, but the reality of it is that the pool of customers we have is not what we really need to have in our community to have successful small business. I think one of the things that we really need to do is to work on increasing the number of people who are living in the core of our town. If we look at some places such as Run Oak, Virginia, Asheville, North Carolina, they have encouraged the development of loft apartments in their downtown, and I think we need to be doing the same sort of thing to incentivize that kind of action, so we can have more people who are customers for our small businesses, for our restaurants, for our specialty stores. That provides life in a community. It provides interest. It provides involvement, and it puts money into your town. And having these customers for these businesses is the obvious key to helping them to be successful. I do believe that the sports complex that we've worked on over the last several years will be a big help in terms of making our town appealing to young people. I do think it's important that in the future, that our town be, have a diverse population of both ages and races and national origin, that we're an appealing place for a broad range of people to come to. I welcome, I'm certainly sort of past retirement age myself, but I think we are not destined to necessarily be a retirement community. We need to be a growing, thriving community with a lot of young people living here, and we need to be working for that. Thank you.
One of the things that I've been impressed with over the last several months with some committee meetings I've been attending is how the Main Street revitalization organization has really gotten some new footing. They've really taken some great steps to help our downtown area and the historical area, but they're very limited as to what they can do within the footprint of what they can serve. So I think what we need to do is, we need to take some of the energy and the ideas from that Main Street and make it something that we could replicate in other parts of the town to revitalize the businesses, to get people moving out of the historical area into other areas of town to see what's there and to take advantage of shops, businesses, et cetera, that may be available outside of the direct downtown area. I do know that several years ago, there was a survey done, I think of folks coming off the Creeper Trail, and one of the things that they were asking about was they wanted to have late-night entertainment. They wanted to have restaurants that were open seven days a week. They wanted to eat at our local restaurants on Sunday, when so many of our restaurants are closed. And I know that that's a hardship on local restaurants, but I think it's necessary for the young folks that we want to get, their lives are 24/7, and so we need to be addressing the type of things that they want. They want late-night entertainment. They want Uber. They want Lyft. When people are coming into town and they want to go have a drink and they want to have some late-night partying, they want to be able to get home safely. So we've got to look at the type of things that that particular age group needs and wants in their particular life to keep them happy in their community that they're in, and see what we can do to get our business community to take advantage of the ideas that they have.
Okay, I have to admit that I don't really have any well-formed solutions or ideas. This is a tough, I know there's a lot of empty buildings, empty storefronts, and right off, you know, I don't know what the solution is, but I do know that we have to be able to compete with other communities. And, you know, and as this question came to my mind, I thought about, you know, the new sports complex and how I hear from young people all the time that we really need this, we need it for our children, we need it for our grandchildren, and, you know, we've got to have things like that that'll make people want to come here and work and live and get a job. So I think that is the beginning, the new sports center at Exit 17.
Yeah, once again, I've heard a lot of great ideas, and I agree with a lot of it. I think the small business world in Abingdon is complex and cumbersome. I think there has to be a way to simplify the process, and I think we're working on that, but we can do a better job. Like I said, I've been through that myself. I've heard a lot of people yelling for Sunday hours, and I can tell you from personal experience with the dessert shop, that we did a trial, and we do some Sunday hours from time to time, and it's a real struggle. There's not a lot of foot traffic on downtown on Sundays. I'll give you, the bright, the silver lining to that is, is I did run into our Director of Economic Development a couple of weeks ago, when we were having one of the Sunday functions within town. I think it was Easter, and they were having an egg hunt for children and so on and so forth, and I walked into a local business and was just, you know, purchasing some things, and like I said, they were having a function, the town was, and I think if we can find a way to coordinate between all the small businesses or many of the businesses in town for Sunday hours, I think that's great, but if we just have a few here and there, once again, with my experience with the dessert shop, it just didn't, you know, we couldn't make enough money to pay the staff to be there, to be quite honest with you. But we've got to find a way to make that less burdensome and hopefully get some sort of a system set up to where all the small businesses can open at the same time and so on and so forth. As far as attracting young people, I touched on that earlier, and I do, I think it's multifaceted. I think it's difficult, but that's a real struggle moving forward. Got to work with the county. We've got to work with these organizations that are with, we are part of Virginia. There's organizations like- There's organizations like Go Virginia and Virginia Economic Development and Planning, and then there's finance groups that will help finance businesses in town. But I think we've got to work together as a team, touch all the right people, the Director of Economic Development as well as the Director of Tourism, and if we collaborate as a team and unite, I think we can get this thing in a positive way.
The big issue, revitalizing downtown, how are we going to get youth to come here and how are we going to keep them here? That's the big question, in more places than Abingdon. But people need to feel welcome. Are we opening up our hearts to them? Are we showing them that we want them here in Abingdon? How do we keep them? By giving them things to do. We've talked about sports complex, sports complex for the youth. What are we going to do? Our old head's going to do out there. Walk. We better look out for us, too. Hopefully, hopefully, there will be some type of activities for the elderly. And I think I qualify for that. I can't play ball no more, I can talk about it. I can coach it, but I can't play. My mind says yea, my body says nay. So we want to keep in mind at all these businesses and whatever we have to do, that we have to make people feel welcome and make them feel comfortable. And I think if we do that, a lot of things are going to take care of itself. And that's what we're, our aim and our ambition is, to make everyone feel and want to be
As far as revitalizing downtown, I think we're going to have to look at the town codes to see what needs streamlined and to encourage new businesses and things that are attractive to visitors. And encourage visitors to come to Abingdon. We need to increase employment by cooperating with the county. The county is typically taking the lead on industrial development, and the town could share in that, and therefore, or thereby, provide more employment for more people in town. As far as the youth are concerned, I think, I think we need more, certainly more recreational facilities. We've got the Coombs Center, we've got some nice playing fields, we can use some more of all those things. And activities and facilities for youth are, would be priorities.
Thank you. We will take the next question, and this time we will start with Dr. Moore. The question is this. Many here tonight have questions about the sports complex. What do you know about the plans for development, the phases of construction, and the completion time schedule? Would you try to modify these plans? Would you like the question repeated? Everybody have, okay. What do you know about the plans for development of the sports complex, the phases of construction, the completion time schedule, and anything else you might want to add about those plans? Would you try to modify the plans?
Thank you. Well, we've, we've all seen artists' renderings of the proposed recreation complex. The first of those were presented in December 2015. I do not know of a completed plan, not an artist's rendering, but a complete plan of a sports complex. I have not seen that. I haven't heard that it's gone through Town Council. I've been to almost every Town Council meeting for the past two and one-half years. I have not seen that. Earlier this year, the town manager stated in Town Council that Phase Two, which is the town project, recreation project, is years away. One Wednesday afternoon not long ago, he said, "Years away, if ever." Last week, I heard that the town management stated that there was a contract to complete this project, but no one has come up with a contract. So it seems that every time one answers or asks a question, depends upon the setting as to what the answer is. So I'm afraid I can't answer exactly what it's going to look like because I've not seen or heard of a completed plan. It's entitled Phase Two. I've not heard a completion date. So I'm afraid that I can't make recommendations as to a change in the plan because I haven't
I will confess that I've been a little bit out of the loop over the last two years, but I was involved, obviously, in the development of the concept and of both the business aspect of it and of the sports complex itself. I think within the next year, we're going to be seeing the, the business portion of the complex completed, and it's my understanding that essentially all of the retail stores that are in hotels and so forth that are there will be opening at about, at about the same time. As far as the sports complex goes, it is my understanding that the, what we would call the pad for where the fields will be located will be ready in about December of this year. I haven't heard a formal plan in terms of when the actual fields will be completed, but if I'm working on council, I will do everything I can to move it forward as rapidly as possible. I do feel like there are some very definite steps that really haven't been terribly discussed that are required. We really need to make sure that we have a sound operational budget and management plan for the complex and a marketing plan as well so that we can take full advantage of the economic opportunity that we have that comes with that. But certainly if I have an opportunity to help change anything about the timeframe, it will be to move it forward and not to hold it back. Thank you.
Sports complex has been some, is an issue that several constituents have brought to my attention almost from day one in January, and I had an opportunity to speak with someone at Town Hall about it. I was informed that the sports complex is going to be very Abingdon-centric when I was particularly asking about it being designed for travel ball, because we've got a lot of families in town that are going down to Domtar Park in Kingsport, and I believe there's another one in Bristol. They would like to not be traveling all over East Tennessee for travel ball. They would prefer for it to be here in Abingdon. And so when I met with the individual at Town Hall, the travel ball was not something that they, at that time, was focused on. One of the things he did tell me was that the plan is not finalized. It is still in a development stage. He was making changes as to parking spaces, but I got a sense of what the plans were as far as soccer fields, that will also be football fields, a walking path, the play area, possible splash pad area where restrooms are going to be. So I got a sort of a layout of where things are, but again, it's not anything that was in a final format, that it's still with the designer and the contractor to work out the logistics. I got the sense during this meeting that this would be something that the new Town Council would be giving their final approval to. So as far as timeframes are concerned, we didn't get into timeframes. I was just really particularly interested in what the plan was and what the landscaping plan was as it relates to the Creeper Trail.
Well, I have met with town management, and my understanding is it's 80, the plans are 80% complete, and we're probably looking at a year, year and a half. And I know that he would also welcome anybody else sitting up here to come visit him and discuss it. And I'd also like to add that with this sports complex, we get the, that longtime problem solved with the Exit 17 interchange. And I was also found out, and I know that this job's going to be a learning curve for me if I'm elected, but, you know, I have a lot of learning to do, and it'll be a learning curve for me. But the state has something, what they call a smart scale, that they use to determine whether we get this new interchange and all this. And the only, the only way we're going to have it is if this, all this other sports complex and everything that's been laid out before happens, then we'll get our Exit 17 interchange the way we want it. And I left really feeling assured that the end result, we're all going to love it, and I'm excited about it. Everything that's going to take place, and it'll be beautiful when it's all finished. So I say let's move it forward.
I, you guys can probably tell already, I'm a huge proponent for the sports complex because I've got a six-year-old daughter, but I too have met with town management and other individuals associated with the sports complex development. And just to give you kind of a heads up and an update, as you can tell from the interstate, we are moving dirt right now. We're grading the land, getting the field prep ready, and the grading actually could be done as soon as the end of next month. We are 80% complete with the planning of the sports complex as of right now, and to give you some more perspective, we can't actually be 100% complete with the planning until the grading and the infrastructure has begun. So there's no way to get 100% certainty with the plans until that grading and preliminary work is done. We, so to put it into real terms, you know, we're a month or so away from getting the earth moved and being able to see what the sports fields could potentially look like, which is super exciting. We also, I took it upon myself a month or so ago to meet with the President of the Little League. I've heard some rumors, oh, Little League's not being involved and so on and so forth. I met with the President of Little League and we hashed some things out and discussed some things, and a lot of you guys may not realize it, but we're, Abingdon's fortunate enough to host the Little League, the Little League State Championships next year, and that's going to happen in, I guess, in May. Having said that, there are tentative plans as of right now to host a picnic celebration at the new sports complex because the fields will be ready. The structures and all the roadways may not be 100% complete, but the fields and everything will be ready, and they're going to host a picnic, a celebration of sorts to sort of christen in the new sports complex and get people excited. Like I said, I wouldn't make any changes to it. Donna touched on the smart scale. I think everybody needs to realize, I live off Exit 17, and if something happens to that sports complex, that smart scale will no longer qualify us for a redo of Exit 17. That is something that still can change before it starts. And I'm tired of sitting in traffic, and I would love to see that happen at some point
I think everybody that knows me know that I'm 100% sports complex. I've spent 40 years dealing with the youth of Abingdon. And it's, those guys I see today, they're grown, have families, and doing well. I think we need to not relocate this facility because, like I said, we've got to work as a team, from the business aspect to the athletic aspect. We're all based on unifying and becoming as one, one helping the other. Travel ball. Ms. Morris mentioned Kingsport, but from the people that I've talked to in this travel ball, they go as far as Georgia, Florida, North Carolina, it's all over. It's all over the nation. Kingsport makes millions of dollars just by hosting tournaments. And I think we have that opportunity to do the same. That's going to bring people, we talk about revitalizing downtown, that's going to bring people downtown. People, like I said, we've got to work as a team. One hand helping the other. And we are not accomplishing no goals until we unify and become as one.
The sports complex, I think, has been approved by the Town Council. It's up to the Town Council to ensure that the plans meet the town's requirements and to make sure that the traffic doesn't plug up an already fragile situation on Covington Street, and I think we probably ought to just stop thrashing this dead horse.
Hi, everyone. I've got some information to confirm that other people have said. I also met with some town employees to confirm things. I've seen some of the plans. I met back when they were at a 25% readiness. They are apparently now at an 80% readiness, but I have seen them. They involve seven fields, three of them multipurpose, four baseball fields that have been addressed to be regulation for Little League and multiple other things. They have the capacity to serve in many different ways. The goal, which was one of my main concerns, is not to host tournaments for travel ball. It may be a nice extra if we can fit those in, but the goal is to help Little League and local youth. And then if we can actually host home games as well for travel ball within the schedule, that'll be an added plus. Instead of sending revenue out of town, we'll be bringing them in. I could be wrong, but I did meet with the Director of Finance, and I believe that he said the financing for the road and sports complex has been approved. I will double-check that and if, I'll post something on Facebook if I'm incorrect. I would also note that the Mary's Meadows building will be retained as a center area for the sports complex. I believe it's going to be a museum of some sort. That is the kind of thing that is still to be decided, and I think that we are welcoming citizen input. I know I very much would. I've also been told that some of the barns that needed to be taken down, the wood has been retained, and they don't have a set purpose for what they're going to do with the wood, but they would like to integrate, integrate that into the new sports complex in some way to honor it. So again, if you have thoughts on some of those things, please speak up. I think it's a way where we can all come together over this and stand behind it. Abingdon has needed, expanded, and improved sports facilities for over 30 years. Now we have a chance to move forward with it, and I think we should.
Thank you. And now for the next question. This time, we will begin with Mr. Morgan. The question is, how would you promote or ensure transparency in Town Council proceedings? Again, how would you promote and ensure transparency in Town Council proceedings?
Thank you. Transparency is, is one of these things that all of us can be in favor of, just as we're in favor of apple pie, the flag, and mom. Transparency is one of these things that as government and elected officials, we need to strive for, but there can be difficulties sometimes in being as, quote, transparent as some of the public might wish us to be. State law outlines several situations, such as matters dealing, personnel matters, sometimes business negotiations, where it may not be appropriate or feasible to do all the negotiations out of the public. That being said, the council should have a good reason for going into any type of closed session, and it should be done as little as absolutely possible. There should also be a clear statement of why the, you went into closed session, and if at all possible, a clear statement when you come out as to what was the result of the discussion that you had. the discussion that you had. Doing the public's business in the public and in the, in the sunshine is the goal we need to shoot for, but you know, there are certainly challenges in making that happen. But again, it's one of those things that we need to make every effort to make the public as, to be as open as possible with the business that is, is the public's. We also need to be clear about the minutes that we publish and you know, the information that we put out about the meetings that we have and try also to make sure that the public is aware when we're having meetings. I would note, for example, also with the planning commission, for example, and activities with zoning and those things, there needs to be a statement in the press if at all possible, in layman's terms, so people can actually understand what the topic will be that will be considered. Thank you.
And I'm gonna follow up with something you sort of started. I've, in my role as volunteer coordinator with the health department, a word that I've come up with to explain a lot of things that bother me is I don't want something to be government-y. And I think you all know what that means. I think one of the things that we could do is strive to be less government-y. One of the things that I would certainly love to see is I would love to see something done with the website so that it could be a great deal easier for our citizens to gain information about meetings that are coming up, how to get to YouTube, how to get on Twitter, how to get Alert Abingdon so that they can on a regular basis get as much information as they possibly need. One of the things I was frustrated with back in the winter is on Alert Abingdon, they were posting YouTube for meetings that happened last year. I want there to be things on Alert Abingdon that are happening this week, today, right now, so that folks don't feel like that there's something that they missed. So I want things to be as current and as open as possible. I think if we need to sit down with all the town council members and all the town employees and have a discussion on what Virginia's Freedom of Information Act is and what it means to them as an employee, then we need to do that. I think it's vitally important that if we're going to gain the trust of the citizens again of Ta, of Abingdon, that we've gotta prove to them that we are as open and transparent as possible. Other people have mentioned that there's some division in their sides and a lot of that is because of that. People feel like they have not been heard and they do not know what's going on on a day-to-day basis and they want to be engaged and they want to know. And I think that's our responsibility to make sure that happens.
Well, I'll just say that I definitely promote transparency and that, you know, I realize that that's what builds trust and confidence. And you know, I never really want anybody to say, oh, nobody knew what was going on. You know, I want it out, you know, where everybody knows, there's no questions. And that just helps, that, I mean, there wouldn't be any controversy or any, you know, backbiting and all this going on, I think, if everything's just, you know, laid out in the open. So I definitely promote transparency.
Yeah, to touch on transparency, you know, I pride myself in trying to be as open with communication lines as I can. My career lends itself to me being available all the time, pretty much for the public to reach out to me and that will continue. I, I said it at the last forum, I think open communication and transparency is a minimal competency for someone running for town council. I mean, it just baffles me to think that someone would even try to run for council if they didn't plan on being honest and transparent. To touch on the closed sessions, I've had a lot of questions about those and clearly those are in the code of Virginia for certain situations, personnel, so on and so forth, that you don't wanna air out dirty laundry right out in the open during a public forum. But I do think the council, as of late, has done a really good job of going into closed session, then come back and out and, and saying, hey, this is what we discussed, or at least the details you can divulge to the public. And then the other thing that, you know, has struck me about transparency, I mean, these meetings are taped now. You can watch them on Facebook or on YouTube. And I think that has definitely lent itself to promote transparency within the meetings. And once again, you know, open communication is just imperative for town leaders. Like I said, I pride myself on being a good communicator and having a large footprint in Abingdon. I invite all of you, not at the same time, but individually, to contact me in any way you want. I have an open door policy and I pride myself, like I said, pharmacists are some of the most trusted healthcare professionals there are. And that won't end if I am lucky enough to have your guys vote for town council.
Transparency is a must. People should feel they can talk to you about any issue. Some things are public and some things aren't. And I know as an individual, you know what you need to keep in private and you know what can be open. My door, like I said, is an open door policy. Built on honesty, trustworthiness, loyalty, and most of all integrity. I hope to be the person that you feel like you can come and talk to about any issue. And knowing that you're gonna get an honest, straightforward answer. And people that know me know that that's the type of person I am. I can't, I don't hold back punches, but I don't like to throw punches. Because I think communication is the key. And I realize, and hopefully you do too, that the squeaky wheel gets the grease. And that can go a long way. But we don't wanna just grease that wheel, we gotta grease the whole axle. With that being said, I think transparency is the key.
I think we can fix the transparency problem with the town of Abingdon. I believe that could be done with a new set of policies for the conduct of the council meetings, including open discussions with the public, conducting business in public sessions, using the town's website and other means of communication more effectively. And primarily by listening to what the public has to say and acting on it.
Something has come up in some of my discussions with people, so I'll clarify this upfront. Some people have asked about my employment at Barter Theater, so I'll just say upfront that I plan to recuse myself from any decisions that directly affect Barter Theater if elected. So that's one thing. To me, like I said in my opening statement, transparency is about proactive communication. I am in favor of hiring and finding a communications director for our town. I think we need it at this point. This person could be in charge of translating the legal jargon for these decisions and what's going to be worked on and voted on into straight talk so that we can all understand it. Because the key other side of transparency is an open and engaged and informed public. We can be as transparent as we want, but if no one's paying any attention or reading or listening, it doesn't matter. So how do we actually get information to all of you where you get your information? The paper? Yes, we're doing that somewhat already. We need to have a better social media presence. We need to have a clear timeline for when decisions will be made and voted on. I don't think that we should ever be voting on something after having just had a first reading within the same meeting. They should at least be one meeting later so to give the public time to weigh in and give feedback. I'm also in favor of during meetings, having limited response time during public comment where the town council can ask some questions. And vice versa, where there's a chance for the public, if there are any questions, to ask things of the town council. I think government was always intended to be a two-way conversation and we've lost some of that. So that to me is what transparency is about and we need to investigate different ways where we could do that involving some of your input as well. Thanks.
As I mentioned earlier, we now have a unique opportunity to restore, for Abingdon, open government and an all-inclusive government. That means all the citizens feel that they have a part and to say, we live in the Commonwealth. Citizens should feel that they are a part of this process, that they have a voice that is heard, not just heard, but listened to and respected. We could be transparent in our meetings, yes, but the citizens need to feel that they are indeed a part of the process. So often I've seen agenda items show up for a public hearing, three minutes allowed, maybe a second hearing, usually not. Significant items need to be brought to the public well in advance for the town council meeting. An opportunity to run the idea up the flagpole, see which way the wind's blowing, get input well in advance so that people feel that they are true participants in their town. Not that they've elected a body that does everything for them, makes the decisions for them. The citizens should be part of the process. Once you feel like and you indeed are part of the process, that solves our transparency problem. No hidden agendas, no business done but a wink and a nod. All of us are equal and should be participating equally in this process. Yes, the website can be updated. We can fix it so it's much easier to navigate social media items. I'm too old for all that stuff, but for you young folks out there, it's a great avenue to communicate and keep you up to date on what's happening. So yes, we will do it if elected. Thank you.
Thank you. As we approach our next question, the audience would like to know your vision for economic development within the town limits. And especially, they would like to know what are the guidelines or the principles that we should follow as a town and a council for this economic development. So basically, we're looking for your vision for what can be done about economic development within the town limits and what should be the guiding principles that shape that economic development. This time, we begin with Ms. Morris.
As I mentioned a couple of questions ago, you know, I've, I know that we've got a lot of empty storefronts and that to me needs to be our, our major focus with our economic development. I was interested today that Governor Northup had an announcement about an entrepreneurial funding stream that's gonna be made available. And the first thing I thought about is, well, that's the kind of thing that we need to be looking out for and utilizing in Abingdon is bringing entrepreneurs with new ideas and new businesses into town. One of the things that I would like to see with the infrastructure, the fiber optic infrastructure that we have in town, is I would like for our, some of our businesses to be brought in that can, that do their business through fiber optics so that they can be in their office at four o'clock in the morning if they want to because they're doing business with someone in California and that they could do their, their business electronically. I think it's an interesting concept for Abingdon. I think we've got the infrastructure process for it and it's one of the things that I would like to see. I think one of our challenges is that I'm concerned that, that we're getting a sense that we're a difficult town to start a business in. You know, I was at a town council meeting where there was a, an individual was trying to open a business, they were going into six months of trying to get through all the process to open a business in Abingdon and then it been approved in Smith County in thirty days. I think we need to look at the structure that we have, the hoops that we're making our businesses jump through to see if we can't ease that burden. Again, Hannah mentioned that checklist, I think the checklist is a good first step, but I think there are other things that as a town council, we can do to make it easier to begin a new business. And those new businesses are part of the economic engine that we need have rolling in Abingdon.
Well, I too agree that we need to make it easier, you know, for businesses. I'm not sure exactly how, you know, being on town council, you know, that we do that. I, I just know that we can't be afraid. When, you know, somebody wants to develop, we just can't be afraid to allow it to happen or, or to always have resistance against it, especially when it's good for our town. I do know that we have laws, the zoning laws and planning commissions and we have people, you know, that are, you know, on these boards to help decide and they bring it before the town council. So we have to rely on town management to sort of help us with this. Like I said before, this would be a learning curve for me and I have a lot to learn, so you know.
So as far as vision for economic development, I'm not exactly sure what's being asked there. Having said that, I'll try to answer it as best I can. As far as a vision, I, I wanna see all the small business shops, all the locales in downtown on or around Main Street filled. I wanna see all those filled. It's gonna be a hard task and I don't know that the council alone can accomplish that, but if we work with the major players, like everybody said, I think we can, if we work with the director of economic development and, and just kind of form a group and, and try to be cohesive and, and figure out exactly where we're headed with the small business as far as streamlining the process and all that, I, I wanna see all those businesses and shops filled. Touching on what's already been said, I think we have to have a close relationship with the county. I think we have to have a closer relationship with the state. We may be in southwest Virginia, but the state has many organizations that would love to help southwest Virginia attract jobs. I mentioned before, Go Virginia and some of the other institutions that will allow us to develop and recruit businesses. I think we need to work with our representatives. I think we need to work with anyone who is involved with bringing jobs to the area. I can think of at least three or four locations in Abingdon, in town, that would be suitable for, for industrial development. I think, I don't see any reason why we couldn't attract some of those businesses if we worked closely with the county. And I think the main thing is, is we just gotta work, we just gotta work hard to try to attract businesses. And I, and like I said, as far as vision is concerned, I mean, I wanna emphasize the arts and the history and the tourism sector and if we can find a way to integrate all those with our downtown, I think that will make us the most successful that we can possibly be. I hope that answers that question appropriately.
I do support the economic development effort that would bring new revenue and also keep our real estate taxes low. I think this is what is needed and I think that, that is the exact thing that the sports complex can help us do. Bring new revenue by people coming in, into our town off the interstate, walking the streets of Abingdon downtown area through, with the small businesses. I think that revenue would be created as new. And also, the real estate taxes. This sports complex will help us keep our real estate taxes low. Because I think Food City is relying a little bit on the sports complex to help their revenue. And I think all of these things will help keep our real estate taxes at, at a low rate. Now, the initiative that our economic development team has, I think it, it has the right idea. You know, and, and I think our aim, their aim is to keep and maintain the low real estate taxes that we are faced with. Hopefully, we, we won't have to raise them because of other revenue such as new Hopefully, we, we won't have to raise them because of other revenue, such as new small businesses and this sports complex.
My vision of the economic development situation is that, in the past, the town of Abingdon has concentrated its energies on tourism and commercial growth, whereas the county has largely focused on industrial development. And with that in mind, the three main industrial parks are located in Washington County. I'd love to see, in the short term, I'd love to see the town concentrate its energies on tourism and related businesses to, to protect and beautify the historic district, to attract tourists, and, and support the arts. And in the long term, I would like to see the town work with Washington County to increase industrial development within the town. There are several potentially attractive industrial sites within the town that could well be used for the town's economic growth benefit.
I agree. I think we need to work with the county for this. We're not in a bubble. They're, we're in the county. They're right there. I know for many years, the county has not had a Director of Planning. We need to work with them to develop an economic plan. That's the point, is the plan establishes a strategy and benchmarks and lily pads along the way that you know if you're following it or not, and if you are going off course, that may be okay, and we as a community have to be able to assess, okay, do we want to change the track that we're going on? But you have to have those benchmarks in order to know those things. So, the plan part is essential. Now, I got ideas, I got ideas for days, but it's not about just me giving ideas, it's about all of us coming up with ideas. I think we do need to overhaul some ordinances. We have many that we're not enforcing. We're just not enforcing them because we know that they aren't enforceable, so then why do we have them? I think I want to focus on activity-based businesses and experiences. That's what the young people of, of the world are looking for. We can bring in things for people to do. When it's muddy and rainy and it's a Monday, what are people doing other than the creeper trail and the barter? We can look at public transportation, making it easier for people to get around so they can come to Abingdon, park their car on a Friday, get around, do what they need to do, leave again on a Sunday. I think we need to encourage innovation and local creativity. We've got so many creative minds here and innovators, let's, let's tackle that. There's room for agricultural tourism. There is room for STEM research. There's been articles written about our area becoming the next Silicon Holler. We are not in a bubble, and the coal fields have affected us, so what are we going to try to fill that vacuum with? Abingdon is a small town, but STEM things and technological advances don't need a whole lot of room for a footprint.
Regarding economic development in town, that's our topic, we need to streamline the process for new businesses. We need to work with the landlords who own these vacant businesses to make them more attractive to future tenants. A little rent is better than no rent. We need to organize or have the merchants organize an independent association, working together to coordinate activities. We need signage on Interstate 81. We live within eight hours of a huge percentage of the population of the United States. 81 is a very busy highway. We need to capture those tourists to stay for a day, then come back and stay for a weekend, like it, and come back and stay for a week. We need signage on the entrance ways into town, letting folks know what's downtown. There is no such thing as that. We need to take advantage of our assets. We are a trail town. There's, there's no facilities, bike racks downtown to accommodate those on the creeper trail. We need to coordinate the activities of Barter, the Arts Depot, Holston Arts, Hartwood, William King. Each are indep, each are operating independently. We need to coordinate activities to maximize the, the effect of all of those to our mutual benefit. We need to incorporate the historic sites. Our goal should be to win the National Geographic Legacy Award, building progressively on our historic and cultural assets. That should be our goal.
The fundamental concept of economic development is to recognize what your assets are and to build on them. And our town has a number of assets that we can effectively use to improve the economic life in our community. First of all, we have a high-quality, first-rate business and technology park, Stone Mill Business and Technology Park, which is well-equipped with all the infrastructure that is necessary to support any type of office and intellectual-type business. We have been slow to fill that up, to bring new jobs into it, and I think one of the essential things that needs to be done is to coordinate our efforts more closely with Washington County and, in that regard, and to do a better job of advertising what that asset is. We also need to build on our farmer's market. It's one of the real gems of Abingdon, and I believe that Abingdon should be recognized as a food destination, for lack of a better description, a place where you can come to to find unique food and beverage opportunities. It's one of the ways that we can support the farmers in our community and help to build on the agricultural community that, that we have in our town. We do need to recognize that the creeper trail offers an opportunity to get people not only on the trail but off, also back into town, and we need to build more activities on and around that particular asset. We also need to understand that we have a very appealing downtown. It's walkable, it's attractive, it's a, it's a great place to spend time in, but we need to have more people living in that downtown that can provide customers and, and support and activity in that town. And so, again, understanding what our assets are, building on them is really the key to making our town a lot more of a prosperous place to live and to want to move to. Thank you.
Thank you, and let's move on to hopefully two more questions. The next one would be from Ms. Quech to start, and that question is, Abingdon support for the library is less than $1 per person. It was, the budget, the town budget was recently cut to the library by $5,000. Marion Chilhawie and Lebanon contribute over $6 per person, as do other Virginia cities and towns, to support their libraries. Are you in favor of raising support for the library, financial support for the library? Would you like that question repeated? Okay. Abingdon support for the library is less than $1 per person and was recently cut by $5,000. Marion Chilhawie and Lebanon contribute over $6 per person, as do other Virginia cities and towns. Are you in favor of raising support for the library?
Yes, I'm in favor of raising support for the library. And I feel like it's a, you know, an important investment for not only our children but for adults, to be able to, you know, go to the library and enjoy it, and I just, oh, I'm sorry. I just think that that's sort of, sounds ridiculous, but yes, definitely, I'm in favor of raising support for the library.
And I, and I would answer yes to that as well. I mean, it technically is the Washington County Library, so I do think the county has some accountability there, and I think if we're going to raise support, we should also call the county to raise support for the library as well. Now, that's just a side note. But yeah, I mean, I don't see why we would not want to support the library in any way that we can. And that's why, as a side note, I think it's so important to have this Meadows development. It's predicted to increase tax revenue by like $1.3 million a year, maybe more, and if we have streams of tax revenue like that, that we can pull a chunk off of and give it to the library, then we won't have to raise property taxes or anything of that nature to, to compensate. So, I, I think it's important, and it's not just the Meadows development. I think we need to focus on some other developments as well, not necessarily commercial, but job growth in general, because if we raise the tax base, then we are going to be able to give more money to the library without stressing out the citizens, the town residents in any way. But yeah, absolutely. Like I said, I've got a six-year-old daughter. She loves books. She's got 200 of them, and we, we definitely need to support our youth with reading and the library.
Most definitely, yes. Libraries should be supported by Abingdon, but not only Abingdon citizens. Like Derek said, it is Washington County Public Library, and we can match their support, and I think the citizens of Abingdon would be more willing to match their support, but not solely use Abingdon taxpayers for that support. I think it ought to be a two-way street with the county and Abingdon.
The library is a hub of activity at Abingdon and an important one, and I would certainly try to find ways to squeeze the budget where I can, to extract a little extra funds for the library, if it's possible. Also, there are other deserving agencies, such as the Senior Citizens, which is now a community services agency, which could also benefit from some of that squeezing. And as I said, I would try to examine the budget and see where we can, where we can shave some funds and apply to the library and maybe some of the other agencies as
Guys, my first job was library aide in fourth grade. I absolutely support the library. That's an amazing figure, less than one person, $1 per person. I kind of feel like the library is like education. I don't have a kid, but I don't begrudge paying taxes that go toward educating our children. I don't begrudge paying taxes and wanting my taxes to go toward the library. It is a public library. If we are here, we live in town, which means we can afford to pay two sets of taxes. We are very fortunate, but not everyone around here is. There are a lot of people that rely on the library to use their computers because they don't have their own, they don't have access to it. They have the ability to go get a book, escape for a little while from their lives of three jobs and kids, going home to bed. We need to do something to support that kind of thing in our community. Yes, there are other things in the budget that I'm sure also need increases or at least leveling out of their budget, and of course, that's not in a bubble either. We need to consider it all. But the library, to me, is a facet of the community that we can't ignore. I think one other thing we could examine is ways to use the library as a tool to create new initiatives and work together. If there is something that we as a town think that we need to do better as far as training of workers, increasing certain skills that can bring business to town, can we use the library to do that? But there are a lot of ways that the library serves us. I know several of us have had community meet and greets for free at the library. We do things like that all the time, so the library gives back to us, and we need to make sure that we're giving back in, in the correct ratio.
That's a question that's old timers would say is a no-brainer. The library is our town university. It's the center of learning and knowledge. Learning is a lifelong process. It's not just filled with books and ebooks. It's got movies, it's got music, it's got meeting rooms for free, all kinds of opportunities. It's a, it's a Mecca. It's an oasis. Those who live near the oasis get the most benefit from it, so we in Abingdon should step up to the plate. It's critical for our quality of life, especially for the children, not just a source of learning, but creativity, imagination, dreaming. It's priceless. We lost our son. He's in the second grade. Finally found him, hiding in the corner, buying this huge book about ocean exploration and oceanography written by Robert Ballard. Moved forward years, he got his PhD in archaeological oceanography. His major professor was, you guessed it, Robert Ballard. Can't say enough for the wonderful job Charlotte Interstaff did for this town. Thank you.
All right, you violated the rules. Don't do that again. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you. Well, I use the library every week, have for many years, and I'm very familiar with what we have and the wonderful resource that it is. Ms. Parsons will tell you that there are times when over 800 people a day will use that library. That's even more than we have who utilize the Coombes Center. We've needed a new library in our town for a very long time, but I have to say, finding a place to build a new library is about as simple as finding a place, actually, it's more complicated than finding a place to build a sports complex. And that is a goal that we need to make as a priority for the future. We do need to provide more financial support for our library and to give it the, the assistance that it really, really deserves to have. We also need to work closely with Washington County because we are, those of us who live in the town of Abingdon, we do pay Washington County taxes, and they have a responsibility to sort, to support that asset even more. I hope in the future that our town will be able to contribute more to the library itself and that we will have a goal of building a new library. I know there has been talk that some of, there may be space even on the Meadows Complex where it might be possible to build a new library, but it is very definitely required. It does deserve our support, and I'm sorry to hear we're down to about a dollar ahead here in town. We can do a lot better than that. Thank you.
Well, Jim said this is a no-brainer for those that are younger. My first response was duh. I'm the child of a reading teacher and a college professor. Books are my life. I'm fortunate enough right now to be the library steward for a free little library at my office. There's nothing more important to me, quite frankly, than, than getting additional funding for the library. I, I was embarrassed when I saw how much the town was offering toward the library versus what's being offered by the town of Chilhawie for their public library. And I understand that it's an, it's a town asset and a county asset, but several times a night, we've talked about how we need to work more with the county. This is a prime example of how we need to work better with the county to fund the town library like it needs to be funded. We should not, we should not be struggling to meet the needs of our library. As Mr. Morgan said, 800 people a day average go into that library, and they're doing any number of things in that library. I mean, one of the things that I did was, the library put me through grad school because I didn't want to buy all those expensive books, and so I went down to the library and they ordered my books from King University and UVA Wise, and that's how I got through grad school. So, there, there is value for everybody in our public library, and the town of Abingdon needs to do a better job, and we need to do whatever is necessary to make it, make the library know that the town of Abingdon supports it.
Thank you. Instead of asking another question, let's go to your final closing remarks. We'll start with Mr. Webb, Dr. Webb, and come back up the table for one minute. You have some closing remarks about any of the topics that we addressed, or if you want to address one that, a question that we didn't ask, feel free to do that.
Again, I'd like to thank the League of Women's Voters for hosting this event, and most of all, you guys, the audience, you're the ones that we're trying to work for. If we can take one thing away from tonight, for me, it's that I'm, I'm committed If we can take one thing away from tonight, for me, it's that I'm committed to Abingdon. I'm committed to open communication and committed to listening. And that's not just to the outspoken residents, that's to everybody. I want everybody in Abingdon to have a voice. In conversation with other residents, I have noticed people seem to want to change, and I believe I'm the change that we need. I think we need a young person with a family and with children to bring a fresh, new perspective to the town council meetings. And I'm an advocate for the elderly, for the underserved portions of the population, and most importantly, the youth. So with your vote and with your support, I'd love to have the opportunity to try and make Abingdon greater than it's ever been before.
I also want to thank everyone for being here, and I think this is an important election. And I believe everyone out there realizes that this is an important election. And I believe it will determine, in contrast, the direction of which way the town goes forward. And I'd just like to say that I'll work hard, and I'll always remember who I'm working for, you, the citizens. So I humbly now ask you to vote for me on May the first.
Thanks to everybody for being here tonight. I was sitting here between questions and counted, and there's 180-plus here tonight. One of the things that I would like to urge you to do after you leave here tonight is make a commitment to the town, to start going to a committee meeting, start coming to a town council meeting. I know there's some people here, I see you, that live out in the county. I know who you are. Y'all can also come to town county, y'all can come to town council meetings. You can come to committee meetings because if you've got a business in town, you care about what the town is doing. I care about what the town is doing. I want to see it flourish for everybody. I hope that you'll come and talk with me after we get finished, if you've got any additional questions. And I thank you for your time tonight. I thank you for coming, and I thank you for being involved in your politics in Abingdon.
Again, I want to thank the Washington County League of Women Voters for sponsoring this forum. It's been an excellent evening with good discussion and some sound ideas presented for Abingdon's future. I wanted to, I thought this evening about a meeting we had here several years ago when Joe Riley, the mayor of Charleston, South Carolina, gave a talk at our town hall about Charleston's success and economic renewal. Mayor Riley said, if your town is a good place to live, then everything else will fall into place after that. I've also got a plaque in my kitchen that was given to me several years ago that says, "Abingdon, it doesn't get much better, or it doesn't get any better than this." And while I want to fully agree with those sentiments, I have my reservations. Abingdon is a good place to live, but I don't think we're as good as it gets. I believe that we can be even better than we are now. Despite the controversies that our town has experienced over the past two years, I will readily admit that I've missed serving on the Abingdon Council and having the opportunity to help shape our town's future. And I ask the voters to give me the opportunity to once again be of service to our town and to make it an even better place than it is today. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having us this evening. I wish you'd done better with the weather, but maybe tomorrow. As I mentioned earlier, this is going to take all of us working together as responsible stewards for Abingdon's future. Remember community today. The next warm Sunday afternoon, I expect to see all of you out with a bucket of paint and a paintbrush that feels pen. I would like to thank you all for coming out tonight. Appreciate your time, your interest, and most importantly, your vote on May the first. Remember, I have a vested interest in the citizens of Abingdon. I hope bring thousands of them into this world.
Hi, guys. When I first decided to run, mainly it was because it hurt my heart to see how much division we had in this town that I've grown to love. I decided to run. I didn't have any preset agenda. In fact, didn't know a whole lot. I just noticed that people were doing a whole lot of talking and yelling at each other and not a whole lot of listening. So that's what I started to do. I went out, I started to talk to people, I put feet on the street, I started asking, I started listening. Pretty much everything you've heard me say tonight, I learned from asking and listening to people who are out, living, working in Abingdon. Again, not to harp on it, but over 70 minimum two-hour meetings with different people since January. And that's on a barter schedule. I am very committed to working for the people here in Abingdon. I think that there's a lot of room for growth and a lot of room for appreciating what we already have. I think ideas without action mean nothing, and action without asking and listening first mean nothing. So I think let's bring them all together and take some action together.
First, I want to thank and express my appreciation to the League of Women Voters for having us all and to all of you for coming out tonight. I know it wasn't such a, such a great night to get out, but thank you. Also, I guess my secret is out. I'm not really such a great public speaker. I try. But I'm a great listener and will be happy to listen to you if you have something to say and want to tell me something or have suggestions or need to be heard. And I would appreciate your support on May the first, and let's come together.
I want to thank each and every one of you all for coming out. Hopefully, I keep telling myself, y'all all come to vote for me, but I know it's, you have a choice. But hopefully, we can, I can get to know you and you get to know me, whether I win or lose, it doesn't matter. But I just keep the door open for your generosity and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you all. And before everybody rushes to the door, hold on just one second. I want to remind you that the election is on May the first. It's at the town hall. I know most of us are accustomed to going to our own precincts for state and federal elections, but all of our voters, all of our votes will be at the town hall at the lower level. So you can park in the parking lot. I understand the staff is going to save spaces back there for voters on that day. If there are folks who cannot come to vote on May the first, you may vote absentee. You can vote absentee any time now before 5:00 on May the first at the county office building on the second floor at the voter registration office. If you're unable to go to the county office building to vote absentee, you can request an absentee ballot by mail. If you go to vote.virginia, spelled out the whole word, .gov, there is an application there. The ballot will be mailed to you, and then you return that, again, by the close of business on May the first. So there are options for everybody in the room to vote. No reason for anyone not to vote. Before we all leave, I'd like for everybody in the League of Women Voters to stand up so we can show them our sincere appreciation for organizing this event. Now let's do the same, show our appreciation to these eight candidates for the preparation they've made and their comments tonight. So they're going to stay around. If there are questions that you want to ask them specifically, feel free to do that. But let's not keep them past midnight. Everybody have a safe drive home. Thank you for being here.